Yeah.
For what?
For our roofing project, to make a check for one-third of the price.
Really?
If you feel that we should, that you should. We're waiting.
So you know we are recording this, that we on YouTube, just not right now.
Oh, yeah.
Recording what? Do we typically do one-third payments? Contractors? It's on, it's the one with bills.
That's, I guess, Dr. Joel, I guess, uh, say.
It's crap. We don't do that.
These are my glasses.
They don't wanna, they don't wanna argue, but I don't know what else to say.
That's where they went, but I couldn't find them.
Insurance, right? If someone showed up a couple of days ago, didn't think of him, Bob Streeter called him, they showed up and they said, we can't do anything, we're not insured. He said, it's a trailer, not a big deal. He said, I don't carry roofers insurance.
What?
Some guy out of Ridge?
This is from.
Garrett.
Someone that was a little more legit than your.
You weren't Jake's.
A- average.
Okay.
And he just said, we just don't, we don't have it.
I said, well, some things like.
Some in business.
Way in this too.
Uh huh.
Okay, this is.
Yeah, and you're right, you're just, you're just popo here. Popo being assistant, right? But understanding all this. They said, I don't wanna throw an R, you don't want to become this thing of, oh, much is picking on the guy. I'm not picking on anything. But anyway, his integrity, I can take video for videos, first video was fifty years, second was thirty-three years.
So. The zoning thing was, we just left that here.
Right.
That was for Marshall. Here's the zoning variance that we published.
Can't afford the job, you know, go do it.
This is what we asked Tasha to do, so it's right here.
Oh, I don't, I wanna hear this, huh?
One hundred percent. Oh, we have, we have no internet, so everything is hard copy. I made copies for you.
So it's the building permit and business license, business license. So there's a permit.
She don't make business licenses, but this. Yes.
Yeah, it's the building permit.
Were those guys on your house yesterday when that hail started?
They were, yes.
So we did not get one single hailstorm stone or one single drop of rain last night before the concert in the park. We'd like driving in town, saying, what the hell happened here?
My Steve Peeters and Bob, uh, John Powers wiped out corn, gonna give their goats.
Oh, no.
They have their cherry trees, the bark knocked off.
Uh, within about a half mile of city limit, limits, when I left, there was still inch to two inches of hail.
That's what we got out of the yard.
At our place, we didn't get one single hailstone.
Well, this started at our house, huh?
Did like this little S, cause Mike Streeter was coming for fire meeting and he said, he just, he said, you could just almost see, just did this weird little twist or whatever.
Yeah.
Charlie Dewitt, I talked to him then, he said, it killed his garden, he said, it's gone.
Yeah.
Disappeared.
Yeah, Sunday, Missouri Valley caught it, all the way from about ten, fifteen, fifteen miles out of Dewboys. When I driving back, I then it into it for about twenty miles and it let up. Then I got a fund in Missouri Valley and it started again to about seven, eight miles from highway, some Missouri Valley, then it finally cleared up again in sunshine and I could look over there. Oh, we got a little rain and she showed me.
Well, that's a day that we had like a tornado that hit Riverton. My God.
Had a gust of wind, hit my pickup, it darn near blew me off the road.
It's all our fault, we disrupted the universe last September. So there.
Oh.
I swore I would never ever.
Really?
I'm tired. I love that place, I still love that, I miss it.
And the people, but the good thing is people are in, they just love it.
Oh, they're wonderful.
Oh, they, 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 they're, they're.
We could've picked the whole thing up, maybe we would. But we're aware, we need to confirm that, I pulled up to the house and I was treating two naked boys that were on their bicycles and go pedaling away. You don't do that in the middle of town.
Some people do.
Well, you, you and which one of your boys was with you? Well, are we ready? We're recording, we just, we're just not on Zoom, cause we're, we, the internet's still down.
Oh, I didn't realize the internet was down.
Yep.
Yep, yep. It was down all day yesterday also.
Always been fun.
Not at my house.
Not at your house? Do you have T-Mobile?
No.
Oh, that's why.
I've been getting it.
My optic.
Huh?
Fiber, my house.
Oh. Now, when do you have internet? We should've come work at your house.
I mean, it's just, yeah, I tied in the old line that went to school.
Oh. Nice, yeah, we haven't had internet for two days. Yeah.
Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ah, let the roll call show that everybody's present. And we do have a quorum. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda with the amendment to put leasing of town property back in unfinished business.
Is there any other questions? So the agenda has been amended, leasing of town properties under unfinished business, can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Can move by Councilman Stettler, second by Councilwoman Harky. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same, want to pass the affirmative. Any communication from citizens?
She had it first. Oh, you're on it? I just would like to.
Please, please speak up, Mr. Veroman, and, and, and identify yourself.
I'm Bart Veroman, and I work for the town of Sisomni. I'd like to propose a pickleball court there at the Centennial Park. There's room where the horseshoe pits are and where the blank driveway is, is like not utilized. I think the seniors and everybody in town would benefit if we could somehow put something over there and that park would benefit. That's, I know it's, it's just, I just wanna put it in your mind and, cause it's a hot thing now.
No, it, it is. I, I know up in Dewboys, they did away with one of their tennis courts or two, whatever, to do that, that's very, very, very popular.
Yeah.
Uh, Mayor Myers, when he was still mayor up there, that, he told me that was a real, real hit and.
To sound like a hick, but what is pickleball?
That's what I said the first time I heard about it. If you're an expert on it.
I'm not an expert, but I seen it on TV.
ESPN?
Kids said everybody could do it, kids on up to seniors, and a senior citizen outfit was actually using it to help the seniors get their energy or actually workout and stuff. And all you do is just use a little paddle, like a ping pong paddle, and like a tennis net, and it's a little short court, but much bigger than this. And you put like five right there where the horseshoe pit is and just paddle back and forth to two sets of, just need one each side, I think.
Like ping pong with big paddles and big balls?
I don't know how it scores or nothing, but it's like ping pong mixed with.
Tennis.
Tennis mixed with badminton, mixed with racquetball. You have to have a net around the whole thing kinda thing, fence kinda area, it's right beside the seniors so they could use.
Well, Bob, people, you know, older than us may be able to enjoy that, huh? It's the seniors.
And the older, the older that, they can watch. That's all I know about it, so I wanted to bring that up and see maybe if we could do something.
No, that's.
That horseshoe pit's not getting used ever, that I see.
Yeah. No, that's a, that's a, that's a good idea. But one other times when we were kicking around things to do, or maybe things to do down on Rock Park, that was one of the things that was sorta kicked around a little bit, you know, cause I know, like I said, it was real, it's real popular in Dewboys. I've been told.
Pickleball.
Think it closer to the town.
Just like, what's pickleball?
It's the big thing now.
Never heard of it, yeah.
Yeah, I just thought it'd be closer to everybody that could walk in distance, and a lot of people use the park somewhat yet, but.
Maybe we're, you know, Central Ohio, I mean, we can get something, maybe hold a state championship here.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, I think it'd be good.
Like, like the Fennel's contest, you know? No, good, good, I'm glad you brought that up, Bart, yeah.
Right.
Nice next to the new swings.
Ooh, ooh. We'll investigate it.
Sounds good.
I think.
Thank you guys. Oh, yeah, thank you for your time.
Good idea, council, at least take a look at it, huh?
Friend of mine put one in his backyard in Utah, and he's in his, he's forty-five or something, he's a very avid pickleball player.
A young kid.
He's forty-five.
Even the young kids can play it, yeah.
Yeah, that's old for us, too.
Yeah, young, isn't it, Chris?
Mm-hmm.
Very good, thanks. Out of the mouth of babes.
Watched tennis TV. Need to get out and play.
Good. Any other communications from citizens? Consent agenda. Can I have a motion, do we wanna split these up, council?
I have a question on the bills, but I don't care if we just split them or not.
Can we approve the minutes, only for July twenty-fifth?
Been moved by Councilman Zent to approve the, the minutes for July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilwoman Harky. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both the same. Motion passed. Approval of bills, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the bills.
Been moved by Councilman Demick to approve the bills, seconded by Councilman Stettler. Uh, further discussion?
I wondered on the first line item, check number ten, ten ninety-seven, Larry B. McCurry. Um, I, I saw it somewhere in the, in the packet that we were doing a third payment, that seemed odd. We typically do third payments, or one, one-third, or was that a negotiated or?
Yeah, it was in the contract.
Yeah, the, it was on signing of the contract, one-third was paid. Uh, second one after inspection of the, and of the penetrations and also worked with Caspar's construction. Everything was up to stuff, the second payment wouldn't be made, the third payment would be made after the project is completed and inspection is done and it's, and, and it's been approved.
So we've made two.
We've, we've made two.
I didn't notice that on there.
I saw, but they were the same check number.
No, that's, um, that's the vendor number.
Oh, I missed that.
That's okay.
Uh, I s- strange.
But if he got, if he's finished, I, I wasn't in town today, so I don't know when, he was supposed to get done this week.
Oh, they said they started?
Uh, yeah, he, they, 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 yeah, they started, they did all the penetrations, I went up and inspected the penetrations and, and also talked with Caspar. With all the rain and everything else, we have no leaks or anything on the penetrations.
That's a good start.
That's a good start, so he had to, he had to finish it up, there's some, some re- repair work non-related to the penetrations that needed to be done. And he needed to do, to do that, and then putting gravel back on the roof where it, where it's been, been removed. Either the repairs where, where the seam was between the first building and the second, that had some wind damage and over the years.
Those expansion joints?
Yeah, the expansion joint, that needed repaired, so he needed to, to do all of that. And then we'll, we'll look at it and make sure it's, it's done, done properly, we got any questions, then move, move forward.
That was my only question, I don't know.
Sure. Any, any other questions from council? Are there any more questions?
Will we approve the bills for July twenty-sixth through August eighth?
Been moved by Councilman Zent, we.
We already removed the second one.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we're, yeah, yeah, we're in the question.
Yeah.
Correct.
My mistake.
Okay, if there are no further questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the poll's the same. Motion passed on affirmative, the bills have been approved for July twenty-sixth through August eighth. Public hearing zoning variance. We have a, Dasha Rosseller is a.
I didn't know if we were gonna read it and then go into public hearing, or should I, I'm gonna go into public hearing right now.
Okay, so it is the variance, correct?
Yes.
Getting moved, we going to a public hearing, second?
I'll second it.
Been moved by Councilman Stettler, seconded by Councilwoman Harky, we going to, into a public hearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both the same. We are now into a public hearing out of our regular session. So we our councils, I think we'd everybody have reviewed the letter of what we need to do to follow what we should be doing on the, on this variance. Marshall, would you like to lighten that a little bit? Okay.
Yeah. Um, so essentially, to give a, any kind of variance, there's, uh, well, let me start off by saying that zoning uh, ordinance are supposed to be strictly enforced with a few exceptions. Then first exception is when there's special circumstances that exist, uh, which, uh, would not apply to the land of building or neighborhood. Circumstances which aren't created by the person that is asking for the variance, i.e. let's, you know, like, uh, something had to do with building or there's, your land just doesn't apply to do like a steep slope that makes, you know, like the ad square footage requirement, it's just impossible to be, that'd be the first type. Second one would be where there's an exception that exists where the conditions would deprive, uh, the owner of reasonable use of their land or buildings. So in order to grant that, there has to be as minimal as possible, uh, any changes to grant that variance. And it has to be in harmony with, basically has to be like your zoning statute is as best as possible before you give them the variance. And it can't be detrimental in any way to public law. Then the third last one would be if there, if, uh, there was a violation, zoning violation that's been in place for more than five years. It's never been enforced for at least five years, for the specific grounds that they're asking. But the big thing is you gotta, whatever it is, you guys have to, or not you guys, the council has to go through a set of finding, findings and talk about some facts as to why it would fit one, you know, on what would put it in a variance.
In reviewing this and, and, and discussing with Marshall, he's, you gotta take these, you know, pretty, pretty serious. But, uh, which, which we do, the, the, the law is owned R three, which, which allows mo- mobile homes. The, in our current ordinance, it refers to the, what, if, uh, it refers to codes or US codes, is that correct, Marshall? Then a trailer, it has to meet certain.
Yeah, the mobile home building codes.
In internet, yeah, mobile building codes. Ms. Rosseller did have a certified electrician inspect home to make sure it is up to, up to code. The appearance of the home, it's been well cared for over, over the years. And, uh, so it, it's not a visual eyesore, a huge improvement to what was there before.
Yeah.
And, and in the past, the council, when Ms. Rosseller was here, we had instructed her that, that, that she did need a, from a certified electrician. She had it inspected earlier by a electrician that, uh, maybe was not a certified master electrician. But Terry Betts, who, who inspected this, is, is a certified master electrician and been so for over forty years. Structurally, it doesn't seem deficient. And, and looking, looking at all of that, I'm the second e- exception exists when the condition of the zoning deprive the owner of reasonable use of land or buildings. Uh, it, and the, where our statu-, where our state, you know what I mean, where our city ordinance are, are at this present time. And the zoning that the property is, I believe this property, because Ms. Rosseller has had the inspection, would this, that second exception would, her, her home would qualify for that. That, that's, would be my, be my un- understanding, I, I don't believe any of the other three exceptions, really, the home would fit those. But I believe it, it would fall in, in to that because of past use of the land, and it is owned for mobile homes. She and Ms. Rosseller did do as we instructed her to do and have a licensed master electrician inspect the home and verify it's, it's not a safety hazard. And then the wiring does meet up to current code, which is beyond nineteen seventy-three, because these codes get, uh, they get moved, there's, can be adjustments over the years. And I believe our ordinance reflects to that, so. Any, any other input, Marshall, assistants?
No.
Okay.
No, just as long as the facts are, everybody talks about, we give them on the record.
So with saying that, I'd like to, to get a motion to approve the building permit for Ms. Rosseller. Oh, excuse me, okay. Any, yeah, any more discussion in the public hearing? Can I have a motion to adjourn public hearing and go into a regular session? Been moved by Councilman Stettler, seconded by Councilman Harky to, to close the public hearing and move into regular session. Now can I have a motion to approve the, we just proven a buil- building permit, that's also permit to move the building, the variance. The variance, prove the variance, yeah, let's prove the, I wasn't in all day, so yeah, let's prove the, can I have a motion to approve the variance that would allow this mobile home to be moved? To the Ms. Rosseller's property.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
We already did.
A vote, I'm sorry.
Oh, we did, oh.
We never had a vote?
Oh, okay. Can I have a vote, all in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Polls the same. Motion passed, public hearing is closed. We are now open in regular session. Can I have a motion to approve the variance that Ms. Rosseller is seeking on the property she owned that's on the corner, or it's on, I, on Fifth Street, and I don't know the exact address.
I think it was one. One oh six.
One oh five, West Fifth.
One oh five.
Two oh six.
Two oh six.
No, that's my, that's my address now.
Yep. Oh, one oh five, West Fifth.
One oh five. I said one oh six. Sorry.
This would allow the nineteen seventy-three mobile home to be, to allow the nineteen seventy-three mobile home. I'll be, been moved by Councilman Stettler, can I have a second? Been seconded by Councilwoman Harky. Further discussion?
So my understanding of the whole ordinance of the pre-nineteen seventy-four had to do with a couple of things, one mainly is safety.
Correct.
And the other is not get a bunch of old dumpy trailers in, was the spirit.
Correct.
I mean, that was the point of the whole thing, and I feel with inspections and knowing that particular trailer, it's neither dumping, it's not, it's not detrimental to any of the property owners. And I feel that it's been inspected to the point where it's safe to live in, so I feel that it meets the required, the spirit of the ordinance, requirements of the ordinance, and that's why I would be, I'd go on the record as being in support of that because of those reasons.
Any further, further discussion? Any, any further discussion? If none being all in favor of approving the variance for Ms. Rosseller on one oh five, West Fifth Street, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, polls the same. Motion passed on affirmative.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. You guys have a wonderful night.
Thank you, being, being so patient with us.
It's okay, I, I, I get it, I understand, it's gotta be, you know, it's safety and
Yes.
with my, I've already had a trailer burned down, I lost everything, so, safety is my number one concern, so, just so you guys know.
Yeah, we're, we're, we just have to go through due diligence and.
Nope, and I get that.
I looked, I looked over firstly myself, pretty closely.
I appreciate everything, thank you, guys. I appreciate everything. Thank you, guys. And I have the money for the building permit. I guarantee you next summer it's gonna start looking really good. I'm gonna work really hard on that lot. Oh, she's, yeah, she's already got her foot right there, so. She's gonna make me.
Okay, permits. We'll move on to permits. First on the list, A, is building permits for Tasha Ross Schiller. We have a permit from Tasha Ross Schiller. And we have diagrams of the placement of the, of the mobile home on the, on the lot. And it shows it's fifteen foot offset from the West Fifth Street, fifteen foot one property line, twenty foot on the other. So that meets all of our rules and regulations we'd have for that. And I'm sure you have you, go ahead.
No, I didn't have anything.
I'm sure you've looked at all the requirements for tie downs and everything that.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have all that there.
You bet. And I believe you're having a professional mover move it and set it up for you, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, PMS.
And they should, they should be aware of all of that.
Yes, and they'll be doing all the setup, all that good stuff, yes.
They didn't like me and my pickup coming over there to do it. You're hired professionals.
As long as it gets it over there, hey. No, I'm just using.
Yeah, I know. Can I have a motion to approve this building? Been moved by Councilman Harkey, can I get a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Councilman Zent. Any further discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls the same. Motion passed, all in the affirmative.
Thank you, guys. Thank you again. You want me to write it to you?
Congratulations.
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome. You guys have a wonderful night. I appreciate it. Now, do I need to do, I'm sorry, guys, do I need to do anything else before I get it moved? Are we good?
Where she's filled out the application and everything?
Yes.
I don't think we have anything else that would prevent her from moving the trailer.
Okay, all right. Perfect, thank you.
You bet. Second, business license for Idaho Towers.
So this is the main contractor for the T-Mobile Tower that has changed from a. Or GAS two, Idaho Tower is the new company that's gonna be the general contractor for the work.
Can I have a motion to approve the, the business license for Idaho Towers?
I'll make the motion.
Been moved by Councilman Demick, can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Stettler. Discussion.
And that's for maintenance on the existing tower?
Correct, it's for the previously approved building permit for the modification, upgrading of the tower. Last year, and they are just now getting started on the work, hence the power outage apparently. With the tower, no internet, but this will be the new general contractor. They just switched companies that's gonna oversee it, I guess.
Any, any further discussion? Work hasn't, work hasn't changed, it's just they changed, they just changed companies.
No, scope hasn't changed or anything like that, just, yeah, just the general contractor.
If no further discussion, all in favor to approve the, the business license for Idaho Towers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, polls the same, motion passed, all in affirmative. Leasing town properties, an unfinished business. We have, have two applications, we have two properties, and this would be for leasing the properties for the remainder of the year. Until December thirty-first. Sort of a short, short lease we have. One of the property, one of those from G and K Enterprises. They're requesting to lease the, the property that. That we go to well for, it doesn't include well for, but on the property that, where we have the little over five acres we'll be selling. It's part of that property over there that we haven't surveyed out yet at the, you know, at this time. Hopefully in future development, well developed there, but that's, but this is for just the rest of the year. There's a lot of grass on it right now, or?
Basically behind the senior housing.
Yes, yeah. On the other, on the west side of Herbst Lane.
Yeah.
It's, it's that, that's property in there, there's all this moisture, there's a lot of feed for cattle and horses out there. And they would like to enter, they'd like to run some livestock over there and take advantage of it. And I have a, they suggested they, they're willing to pay a hundred dollars for the rest of the year to have the, to do that.
So they'll maintain fences and all that other stuff?
Yes, I believe, Jake, can you address that a little bit? You've been working with that and maybe talking.
Well, that was a discussion that, that we'd had and the D and B to our defenses and protecting any infrastructure. Like any hydrants, buildings or whatever to fence them out. And also on the discussions kinda led to if the, if town, for, I'm more of a bit of a long-term plan. With the town-owned property that's for a grazing lease, the town would offer a little bit longer lease, like three, five years somewhere near, which is a lot more common with agriculture leases. Then especially with the leasing being in charge of all the fencing and all, it really encourages the leasing to have, keep it nice, you know, be a little bit better steward of the land. I mean, if you, if you gotta build a few hundred yards of fence to keep a cattle in on an agriculture lease, but somebody could outbid you next year, you're probably not gonna do it. You know, it makes it a more viable lease. Another thought brought up was that if we followed, if the town wanted to follow the same basic schedule as like the BLM as far as for pricing and things like that. Or you get it, my understanding, and maybe Mayor Heisman knows more about this, but you kinda get it looked at, you get a, you get a, a number of animals that the land could support. And you charge based according to that.
Per AMU.
Yes.
Exactly. Figure out the AMUs for that deal, and charge according to that. And then with the, if we're wanting to do the bid deal, you could bid how much you're willing to get per AMU. And then get a little more length. But we're very, we're be different from the BLM, because the BLM just loses tons of money. Fence is down, they, they provide the materials for at least, I don't know about all, I know, because I've had some dealings with BLM and some talks with them. So they would provide, suppose in the south of town there or whatever, BLM would provide to the leasing, fencing materials. Leasing's supposed to do the fence. I mean, why would you do that on a one-year lease, too, that somebody else could get next year? But we're, we're going different as it would be all on, because that would, you would increase, accrue so much cost of those fencing materials nowadays. That it'd take twenty years to make it back in leases, lease fees, that's why I suggest it just, it's up to the leasing to do the fencing. Or we would divide that way, because we're not backed by the federal government on that. But then if somebody's gotta come in and do a bunch of work on it for a one-year lease, it's gonna be harder to find.
Well, also then you suggest that, that it's the leasing that would be responsible to keep his animals in.
Right.
Instead of state statute.
A fence out.
A fence out.
And we can be more restrictive. And where, a lot of that where it comes is like if we're trying to develop that or down south the highway or wherever, or of Second Street, you know, that other one. It, it's like, it's no headache for the town. Hey, your cows are getting off the lease and they're bothering your neighbor over here, you either fix it or get off the lease kind of area and breach. So it takes a lot of pressure off the town, that's my thought on that. No expense, no liability.
Can I ask you my question?
But I don't think that we could do a long-term lease now, but if, if that's something we wanted to do, we could make that decision for January.
It was something we could work on, where it comes up for lease again, and that's why the short term, just the end of the year.
Just to get, you know, whatever. Because who knows, last year, it, it was pretty early, it snow covered everything, so it's kind of a gambling, I think I'd be able to graze it for one month, two months.
Have they talked about how many, have councilor put on it?
Yeah, I, I think we actually could probably get that information from the BLM.
Oh, as far as AMUs?
Oh, oh.
Or no?
So cost of nation district, is that who does that?
Okay.
So the leasing, potential leasing of the G and K, have they told you about how many, how they wanna put on it?
I do not know that, I didn't even ask. But if they're looking to make this a long-term thing, then this is also goes along with that, where the, good stewards of the land don't overgraze it, don't damage it. And I, and I do know that they would be looking at a long-term situation if we could work something out. And so I'm certain that they're not looking to just get every blade of grass mowed down before the snow hits, whenever that may be. And since it's fifty-two degrees in August, it might be snowing. It snowed in Cody last week. I saw that.
It did?
Yeah.
You could see on the mountains up out of Dubois, it snowed up there too this weekend.
So we're going on that pack trip from Miranda, Cody next week, it's like, yeah, pack some long.
Rain gear, too.
Yeah. So that was some thoughts on the whole lease, yeah.
But in, in any event, though, they did offer to pay a hundred dollars for the remainder of the year. And that's what we've been letting these, renting these, maybe too cheap on, every time we look at it, maybe we've been charging too much, but I think we've been pretty inexpensive on these.
And then the bad.
The bill of hay costs two hundred dollars?
Yeah, three, four hundred a ton.
And it's.
Hay's going for two hundred a ton right now, actually.
Is it?
You can get it pretty much anywhere, good quality for two hundred and ten. I mean, it, it is going for two forty as well, I'm disputing that.
That's good to hear.
But you can get it for two hundred. But do you know what, another question I had, I don't really know of what like the lease, that lease was going for annually in, historically?
I don't, we weren't leasing this section.
No, but I'm saying.
We were. A hundred dollars a year then? Yeah, okay.
That's what I thought, it was a hundred dollars a year, so. Will we offer lease to G and K?
It's been, it's been moved, approved the lease agreement between the town of Shoshone and G and K Enterprises. Approximately sixty acres more or less. Can I have a second? That's Councilman Stettler. Been seconded by Councilwoman Harkey. Further discussion?
Do you know who the owner is, at G and K?
Pardon?
The individual owners?
Garrett Herbst. Or he's the representative, I don't know. That's maybe the G.
K's owner.
Yeah, yeah. Tom Herbst's son.
K's, that's why.
Yeah.
Yep.
I was just wondering, what did you thought?
Any further discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, polls the same, motion passed, all in affirmative. The second. Second bid is from Jacob and Carleen Stettler. For. Did we ever come up with the acreage on that Kim, approximately acres, it's approximately sixty-seven, also. That might be sixty-seven, but it's approximately sixty acres.
About sixty-three.
Sixty-three acres. Same, same terms to the end of the year. They have bid fifty dollars to the end of the year. And this property is sorta, sorta west of the, the sewer lagoon and that's, that in there, that was the, the property that Charles Herbst was leasing there. Northeast, north halves, the southeast, the southeast half of section twenty-eight township, thirty-eight north, range thirty-eight west. Give the approximately sixty-three acres. There again, this would be for the. And this property butts up, part of it butts up to Stettler's property that they currently. So.
Can we counter their bid with a hundred dollars?
Pardon?
Can we counter the bid with a hundred dollars?
We, we, we could turn this down and advertise it again. I think, I think with how that would work, I, I mean, I don't believe we're.
It'll cost sixty dollars to advertise it, huh?
I, but, but I believe that would be correct.
Yeah. I mean, if that, if you wanna follow, and I brought this up before, for lease, you don't have to specifically follow the rules that you do for selling property. If you choose to, you probably oughta keep down that road and start going now.
What is the acres for Garrett Herbst's place?
Prox- approximately the same.
Okay.
So the acreages, I believe, are approximately, approximately the same.
Sixty to seventy.
Yeah, I, I believe Garrett's property has probably more feed on it than the other property. Because it's down by the Poison Creek and a bunch of it's not as easily accessible, I, I believe. But, but we can, we can. Do what we, what we like. Can I get a motion to approve? Get a motion to approve?
I give you the motion to approve.
Council, Councilman Harkey has moved to approve, can I get a second?
Second for discussion.
Been moved by Councilman Zent to approve. Discussion.
I think we oughta have the same amount for both leases.
I would, I would agree with that.
Okay.
But I get, but the, the question is, because it was a bid, does that change the? I don't know, that's like, I don't wanna squabble over fifty dollar or anything, it would be looking, if it, could keep it consistent with each of the other leases that we have. If we could just make it simple.
The hundred, hundred dollars.
Make it simple, it's a typo.
This, this is the, yeah, I don't know if Marshall, should we go in negotiation with the, with the high bidder?
You can, there's no, and this is what I was saying before, the statutes leave it wide open on how you wanna deal with a lease. I mean, you don't have to put out for publication, you don't have to do a competitive bid, you don't have to do any of that for a lease. I mean, you don't have to put out for publication, you don't have to do a competitive bid, you don't have to do any of that for a lease.
Yeah, we, we did, yeah, but we, we did put it, put it out.
Yeah.
And, uh, in case there was any other interested parties to.
Yeah, no, and that, which I think is fair and right, I'm just letting you know.
Right.
If you want to set up the, the one thing I'm saying is if you're gonna choose to go one route, I think.
Should follow through.
Be consistent.
And I know on a on a, on a contract bid, I believe we're allowed to negotiate with the high bidder, even if we, uh, that's a construction job, I think you're, you're allowed. I'm wrong if the, if the number was, was was too high or.
I'd have to take, I'd have to go through the statute.
Because seem, seem like they're uh, and and that may be professional services, before that's applicable, which is a different, different bulwarks, that may be professional services, because that's where, I think that is professional services.
So could we make a, wait, could we make a motion that we approve the lease pending negotiation to a hundred dollars? That way, if there's no, if everything's kosher, we've made the deal, we've signed the paper, and away we go, instead of going back through advertising.
And this is just a short-term lease.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman, that makes sense, second by Councilman Zant, the will approve the lease depending upon, uh, negotiation of the price.
To a hundred dollars.
To a hundred dollars. And you give the mayor the authority to negotiate that. So it's been moved and seconded, we append the lease with Jacob and Carleen Stettler, uh, depend on negotiation of a minimum of a hundred dollar lease agreement. Any further discussion? None being in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose the same. Motion passed on, affirm note that Councilman Stettler abstained from voting.
I don't say anything through any of it. I suspect your negotiation will go pretty easy.
I didn't know if we'd call you the podium and just do it right now or not, but it.
That was min- that was minimum, minimum number, I'm opening.
Minimum. It's a pending negotiation, come back five grand, let's say, good job.
Can I have a new bid now?
Okay, thank, thank, thanks for everybody on that, uh. We're down to clerk annual financial update.
Well, am I over?
Well, yeah, because it was your year.
Yeah.
So if there's questions, you're better to answer.
So the first page is the overall snapshot of our financial year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And the bottom line number, where it says general fund year-end zero, because with that denotes is that we lived within our means the entire year, everything that was done last year was done with what we took in last year, and no savings was utilized. Even though it was budgeted for the town hall project, we actually didn't use it. So, we actually had a surplus, and that surplus was used in lieu of drawing from savings for the town hall project, down to zero for the year, so we did not have to pull anything from savings, and if you strike that out, if we didn't have the project, we had about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar surplus last year, would have had it. Couple things that are lingering out there, one being the town hall remodel, obviously, so that was some monies that was encumbered into this year. And the special projects, and what that is, that is that our zoning, our, our zoning update we're working on with our ordinances that we paid for or we purchased last year, it's transgressing into this budget year, so that money was, uh, encumbered to pay for that as well. And then if you go to the uh, second, third pages, it goes more in depth on what constituted the general revenue. Uh, so, budget was five hundred fifty-seven thousand and some change, and we actually took in six hundred thirteen thousand, so we brought in fifty-five thousand nine hundred and one dollars more than we budgeted. And the, uh, the differences there are broken down to how that number was derived, approximately, I mean, didn't break down every single line item, but it goes in the show, pluses and minuses, and approximately what broke, what equaled that difference. In this case, we took in more than we budgeted. And also, for audit purposes, the approved budget versus modified budget, uh, that breaks down all the changes that were made, adjustments made specifically to the general fund throughout the year. Specific to resolutions or whatever action was taken that, uh, modified that budget. And those numbers should always equal up, and they do. Moving on to intergovernmental revenue, which is a different sort of revenue, um, mainly from the state of Wyoming. Uh, we were a little short on what we budgeted, about sixteen thousand. Most of that came from the decrease in sales and use tax, as you can see, as well as gas tax. Was the biggest, uh, divergence versus budget. And again, the, uh, adjustments that were made, um, throughout the course of the year to that, the revenue fund. Capital projects. The difference there in revenue, that is mainly derived because the projects are still ongoing, so we just didn't expend the money. Uh, most of these are reimbursable monies. Um, so it's not so much a shortfall in revenue, just as the projects aren't completed yet. As you can see, the, uh, uh, sewer expansion still has one point two nine million dollars left in it that we haven't utilized yet as of the end of that year. Um, the savings transfer, that was what I was talking about, referred earlier, that no savings was drawn down, we didn't actually have to draw anything down for our budget for this year. Simply because of the increased revenue versus expenditures. Um, no adjustments were made in capital projects outside of what was budgeted. And then we begin to break down the individual expense accounts. In this case, the red number denotes a negative number, um, which is action versus budget, which means we were under budget for expenditures in these, uh, line items where they're red. And black is actually the opposite, so that's actually where we're exceeding budget. And again, any adjustments that were made are notated on the worksheet, uh, from the approved budget versus the end of the year modified. And again, those are all for audit. And I believe the only department that actually went over budget in any regard was the fire department by, I think, ninety-six dollars, and that was mainly because the mill levy came in more than we budgeted, and it's such a small budget that there's
No.
Not, yeah, not a lot you can do in that one. But every other department came in under budget.
For the capital projects, what is the economic project exactly?
Whatever the town council, uh.
That's the TAD money?
That's the TAD money.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, no, sorry, that's the half-cent.
Half-cent money.
And so it's left broad as economic projects for whatever the council.
And the DEQ project is what?
That is the, what the Lake Rivers building was, they're doing a, uh, DEQ, since it was a brownfield reclamation site, they funded twenty thousand dollars basically to do a, uh, not gonna call it a market study, because they don't generate anything that would be marketable like we did with the, uh, the hotel survey that we did. Uh, but they will look for general purpose use and make kind of similar to that, and that's what that is, that's DEQ, D R P. And they're still working on it, we expect to start getting some movement on that probably next month, uh, preliminary thing to bring the council to start looking at, uh, some of those aspects. I'm gonna jump down to the, uh, enterprise funds. So our end-of-year budget for the water fund was positive thirty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars for the year. Out of that is ten thousand dollars towards depreciation, so in effect, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars um, will increase to the, uh, water fund, separate from the depreciation. And then on the wastewater side, there was a five thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollar, um, positive balance, however, five thousand dollars of that is depreciation, so in effect, the water fund minus depreciation actually lost four hundred and forty dollars and some change.
Okay, go back to the waters fund, but we, we budgeted income for two hundred and four thousand, we actually took in two hundred and ten thousand and and change.
Correct.
So we took in an additional six, six thousand dollars.
Um, some of that was the water taps that we did with Vaseline, and they, they paid a market fee, so some of that was offset, so it was pretty close, but yes, it was.
And they, the expenditures, we, we budgeted for a hundred and seventy-seven thousand and change, and we actually expended two hundred and three thousand?
By the way.
Okay.
We budgeted two hundred and.
Oh, right, and, okay, budgeted two hundred and three, and we only spent a hundred and seventy-seven. Did we? Uh, where did we not spend the money on, on, is that something that we missed when we?
No, they're right here, under the, it's broken down there.
Okay.
So the majority of it was utilities, um, and then the depreciation. And the equipment.
Meter.
Yeah.
So utilities were less, quite a bit, potentially.
And ten thousand of us depreciation.
Right, right, mm-hmm. Which we all agree that we need to, to build that, for one thing's goal. And we had EPA testing.
And that was quite a bit over budget, but with water breakage.
Right.
Water issues and stuff like that, increased testing.
That brought that in there, yes.
So my question is, why do we have more depreciation of the water fund than the sewer fund, the wastewater?
Because at the time, quite frankly, that's all we could afford.
Okay.
And if you look on the wastewater, even, we didn't even make the five thousand this year.
Right.
So, in effect, all of the surplus in the wastewater would have been a little appreciation, none of it will be returned to the reserve. But that's also why we recommended a four dollars increase in the, the monthly wastewater, uh, versus one dollar for the water, simply because trying to get the wastewater in a better financial position. Moving on to the senior housing. We did have a four thousand dollar deficit for senior housing this year. And a lot of that comes down to utilities and repair and maintenance.
Should we add a depreciation line for senior housing?
If we could afford one, yes, um, this year, um, we did bring in ten thousand dollars for improvements, I guess, in a way that's kind of like, but it's not budgeting.
I mean, they're twenty years old, right, just look at depreciation of those, I mean.
We'd need to increase the, the rents significantly, but not significant, well, fairly significant, at least, thirty bucks apparently significant, so.
Or twenty-five, whatever, well, I'm just asking, I mean, we have it in the water, the sewer, but not here.
I agree with you. That's kind of what we're trying to.
Correct.
We're trying to get to with the, uh, rate in the rents, um, to that, having that ability to start doing that, not using the savings like we're doing this year to pay for the, uh, renovations and improvements. Having it be self-sufficient and being able to replace for itself. Uh, this year, there is a, uh, the utilities, I guess, the caveat to this, is that five thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars overage, that should have been offset by a revenue item for overage on utilities that was charged to the tenants, because of last year, I know we discussed it, we did not charge that last year, we will be charged this year. So, if that had been charged this year.
Right.
Then it would have been a surplus, not a deficit.
That's something that's just should have been in over the years, been more funding over the years, uh, into a maintenance. But the things are starting to break down quite a bit.
Yeah.
Do we have a depreciation on the clinic?
We do not.
Depreciation on the clinic, I'm looking at the town.
Right.
Things that we own, we have senior housing, we have senior center, basically. You know, water and sewer, should we look at all items for depreciation accounts up there?
Well, we should have a depreciation for all departments, um.
I mean, Caroline, wow, you appreciate your vehicles in the police department.
Right.
And we don't, no, we don't have one, no. That's one thing we haven't put into yet, but we also aren't charging the lease at this time either.
Right, so I think we need to look at how we.
I, well, yeah, because we own all the equipment in there, um, and that's usually typically it'd be ten percent of the valuation, and then the loss of revenue, or the loss of.